The two words information and communication are often used interchangeably. But they signify quite different things. Information is given out, communication is getting through. Well said by Sidney J. Harris. I, Ishakavadwa, student of first year DME Media School, extend a very heartwarming welcome to one in all present here on the first session of day two of ICAN IV. Pandemic is driving a hard bargain on everyone around the globe. And amid the crisis, DME Media School in collaboration with School of Communication and Creative Arts, Deakin University, Melbourne, Australia, took these testing times in its stride and has adopted online mode to conduct the second edition of the world's first 10-day digital live international conference, ICAN. We are happy to announce that ICAN IV is supported by the Indian Council of Social Science Research, ICSSR. The theme for this year's conference is information, communication and artificial networks. And the hashtag for the conference is communication redefined. The former editions of ICAN were not only a great success but were also enlightening indeed. The theme for the first edition of the ICAN was India and changing aspects of news. Followed by second edition, it was Indian cinema and alternate networks. Moreover, for the third edition, it was issues of community, agenda and news and the hashtag was Conference for Change. ICAN IV has four knowledge partners. K R Mangalam University, Guru Graham Haryana. Adamas University, Kolkata. Markhan Lal Chaturvedi National University of Journalism and Mass Communication, Bhopal. And Vijayan Prasad, Government of India. ICAN IV has also partnered with the Department of Communication and Journalism, Guwati University as academic partner. Our international partner, Institute and for International Journalism, E W Script School of Journalism, Ohio University, USA. And our media partner is the Policy Times. ICAN is a flagship conference of DME Media School and today has made an international name for itself. ICAN IV has witnessed. Participation of about sixty eminent academics and researchers from five continents and eleven countries, namely India, South Korea, Malaysia, Singapore, Bangladesh, USA, Mexico, France, Italy, Australia and Ghana. More than hundred media educators and researchers have gathered to present their papers in the conference. We have a total of thirty-six live sessions, including nine technical sessions, three workshops, seven panel discussions, three special sessions and ten master classes. One of the most unique thing about ICAN IV is that all the nine technical sessions are being chaired and co-chaired by a galaxy of intellectual women representing different states of the country. I would also like to extend my gratitude to SPAR, Students with Positive Attitude and Resonating Communication, the Student Council of DME Media School. Journalism at Media is the official newsletter of DME Media School. This fortnightly publication covers all the major activities happening in and out the campus. It is a student-centric newsletter carried out entirely by them under the supervision of the faculty members. DME TV, the official YouTube channel of DME, where you can find the playlist related to all sessions, lecture series, film festivals and conferences. It gives me immense pleasure to inform everyone that we are live on our official Facebook page. For more information, follow us on our social media handles, links are being shared in the chat box. Now, I would like to request Professor Dr. Amresh Saxena, Dean, DME Media School, Director, DME Studios and Production, Director, International Relations, Delhi Metropolitan Education, to please say a few words.
Thank you, Ishika. So, I welcome everybody this morning, particularly Professor Jaishri Jaitwaney, who could spare time so early in the morning despite all her engagement. She could spare this time to speak on a subject which is pertinent to everybody because those who are studying today, they will be joining the media industry tomorrow. So, they must be well aware as to what is going to happen with them when they are joining the industry. And if they know that all, they will join the industry fully prepared. I mean, in complete knowledge as to how to handle the things and what all is there to going to meet them. And as far as this new labor codes is concerned, how this new labor codes will make an impact on journalism, on their livelihood, on their bread and butter and all. And how it will also impact on their freedom and also Professor Jaitwaney is completing, is doing a project on this and she is deep into the subject and has come out with so many revealing outcomes of her history. So, I will not take much time and we would all like to listen to Professor Jaitwaney.
I thank you sir for your wise words. Moving forward, we have an empirical perspective to hear on what new labor codes have for the working journalist in India by Professor Jaishri Jaitwaney. Professor Jaishri Jaitwaney, a doctor from the School of International Studies, JNU in Media and Elections with extensive fieldwork in India, Germany and USA. She is an expert in the field of advertising and public relations. One of her public relations projects was in South Wales under the fellowship in PR. She has over fifty, twenty-five years of career span as professor in IINC, the Institute for Studies in Industrial Development, a public-funded national-level policy think tank working on the media policy issues. Currently, she is a Senior ICSSR Research Fellow based at ISID. The area of her present research is on wages-related issues in the news media industry in India. She has contributed to the Sage Encyclopedia on forfeited reputation in 2016 and has chapters in many books. Professor Jaishri Jaitwaney has received awards like Exceptional Women of Excellence by Women Economics Forum in 2019, Saeok Sahayatri Award on Leadership in Mass Communication Teaching 2014, Best Professor Award by World Education Congress 2013 and the Leadership Award in PR Academics from the PRSI 2010. Now, I hand over the forum to Professor Jaishri Jaitwaney, over to you ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mudita. It was quite indulgent introduction. Thank you, Professor Saxena, Stuti Bala and all my faculty colleagues from DME and also individuals watching and the students. Now, I've been given this task to decode the new labor codes and what is going to be impact on the working journalists. Now, since a lot of students and he's already set the ball rolling, Amresh, that you know, today you are students, tomorrow you are going to be working journalists. And generally, what happens that when we join a profession, there's a lot of things which are written in the finer, you know, point size, finer fonts, which you don't really look at it. It's only when we are in trouble that the employer tells us, well, this was already communicated to you. And if I were to tell you that India is probably one of the most regulated country, there are so many laws, thousands of laws. If I were to ask you as students that how many laws you know about India, which concern your liberty, equality, your life, you know, your life choices, I can assure you, you won't be able to, you know, even count them on your fingertips just to hands. And if I were to ask you, how many laws do you know pertaining to mass communication? Probably that you would know this part of your teaching laws and ethics. You might tell me you know about defamation law, libel, slander, invasion to privacy and also the copyright, not beyond it. But today, what I am going to decode for you is the labor course, the new labor course, which have, which came into being in 2019 and 2020. They are yet to be operationalized and why they are yet to be operationalized? I'll tell you as you go along with the, with the discourse. So, before that, let me just tell you, I'm sure you know, but maybe the cost of reputation, the media bandwidth in this country. We have about one lakh print media, newspapers, magazines. Out of which seventeen thousand are daily newspapers, mainstream newspapers. There are more than four hundred news channels, there are more than thousand. But when we talk about news media, more than four hundred news channels. All India Radio is the one which, you know, broadcasts news, it still has the monopoly. And there are thousands of platforms, digital platforms. So, what one good thing which these labor courts have done is that until then, you know, newspaper employees were considered the working journalists. But these labor courts have included the digital and the electronic media also. So, as Amresh told you that this is part of an empirical study, which has, which I've been doing for the last eighteen months. And the final research will be submitted in the coming December. So, what all did I do, which I'm going to share with you? It was a study of previous legislation. The government data set, especially the NSO, which tells you about the occupations etcetera of the people, you know, of the varying occupations. State of media ecosystem, including ownership, control, sociology. The current four courts, people's objections and concerns and varying views through consultation and a national webinar, webinar which we conducted in January 2021, which I'm very happy to share with you that DME and especially Professor Amresh Saxena were the very important partners in that. And I also did an online research. Now, you know that India, we are about one thirty-six, one forty crore people. And the labor comprises almost seventy percent of the population. And there are about fifty crore people who are in the organized and unorganized sector, working from, you know, fisheries to plumbing, from, you know, aircrafts to running aircrafts, to, you know, teaching in schools, colleges, working in newspapers, there are thousands of, you know, occupations. But labor is a concurrent subject and you would know concurrent subject means that both state and the center can make laws. And there are hundreds of laws relating to labor issues, both at the center and state levels. And at times, these are complex and also contradictory. So, the government for long had been thinking of, you know, trying to make sense of so many laws. And if they could, you know, just combine and give some, you know, a few laws, a few courts, court is, you know, kind of explaining a law. So, beginning during the Vaachpe, you know, late government nineteen ninety-nine, the Second Labour Commission was set up. And, and which said that, you know, out of all these about fifty, sixty laws, could we possibly make them into four to five major laws? So, this went on from nineteen ninety-nine until 2015, when the India government once more came into power and they set up the Standing Committee of Parliament on Labor to get into, you know, the nitty-gritty of the bills before these were presented to the parliament. So, two gentlemen were not necessarily from the, the leading party, the party which governs, were the chairperson of these committees. So, you'll be surprised that when these about forty-four laws were combined to make four courts. So, two very important laws which concerned the working journalists, which were, which came about in the fifties. You know, the problem of the working conditions, wages of journalists has been on from the time the mass media came into being, the newspapers came into being, even the British regime. And there were lots of regulations against them on the content when they wrote, you know, things against the British government. But the government never thought about looking at their safety, looking at their working conditions of wages when we were not independent. But once we became independent, so there were some professional organizations of journalists, journalists who got in touch with the, with the government, when Senaru was the Prime Minister, requesting that media is a growing industry and there must be some, you know, acts, some, you know, things to safeguard interest. Because media, as we know mostly, is in the private sector. So, two special legislations were made for the journalists, the Working Journalist and Other Newspaper Employees Conditions and Services Act, nineteen fifty-five and lettered the Working Journalist Fixation of Wages and Wages Act, nineteen fifty-eight. But imagine these two acts have been subsumed along with Plantation Labor Act, Sales Promotion Employees Act, the Doc Workers Act, the Senior Workers Act, the Fisheries, you know, labor work. Imagine, you know, from journalism is an elite profession, it's an intellectual profession. But these all laws have been put together along with these, these two major laws X, which, you know, looked after the interests of the journalists have also been subsumed. And the moment these were subsumed and interestingly, when we did this webinar and a lot of journalists told me, they did not even realize that these could possibly be subsumed. Because as I said that, if I were to ask you what laws you know, you will not even know. So, journalists are also like common human beings. So, they came to know only when, you know, they knew that this is right in the parliament, the bills are there, they are being, you know, just passed in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the Wages Act, the other three X. I'll just tell you about that in twenty twenty. And you know, once something is done, it's very difficult to take it back. And there were a lot of, you know, writings in the media, generally in the digital media because about journalists, it's very difficult to write in their own newspapers or in their own, you know, TV channels. We didn't hear much about that. But the digital media was full of stories and, and these laws are not just for the journalists that said. These laws are for the fifty crore people working organized and unorganized sector, which means the journalists have been put along with them and they have no idea what is going to happen when they become operationalized. So, out of this forty-four, you know, X and laws which were subsumed, four labor courts have emerged. The Labor Code on Wages called LCW, which was passed in two thousand nineteen. And three more labor courts, the Industry Relations Code, passed in twenty twenty. The Occupational Health Safety and Working Conditions Code called OSH in twenty twenty. And the Code on Social Security in twenty twenty. The rationale of the government was that now they would at least be all together and it will be easier to regulate them and look at the interests of the people. But when you look at the finer lines, when you look at what really these courts mean, so everybody is crying hoarse that these are going to take away all the rights and liberties, you know, as to express, you know, discontent, express dissent. So, what is going to happen? We would know soon when they are officialized. But we have tried to decode and I'll give you some issues, how it's going to concern the, the news media industry. And those of you who are going to join the journalism industry, as Amresh also said, must go with your eyes and ears open. You know, there was a time when the journalists had permanent jobs. It used to be like sixty, you know, retirement sixty or sixty-five. But right, it's not that they are doing it now. Right from nineteen nineties, when the media was, you know, there was huge media proliferation, both in electronic media and the print media has also done very well. And all of a sudden, you found that the employers, the management of the, the media, they started turning, you know, permanent jobs into contractual jobs. Why did they do it? Because then these two legislations were passed in the fifties, which also meant that the government had also set up wage board. Wage board and this was statutory in nature. And this wage board would meet roughly around in ten years' time and we had six wage boards until recently. And they would, you know, tell the, the, the media industry that what kind of scales, what kind of promotions, what kind of things would be given to the journalists who are working. And this was not liked by the, the employers right from the beginning. And when, when the first wage board was set up, big newspapers like Indian Express, Times of Indo, they all went to the court. And we have seen that in the last sixty years, there has been, there have been so many litigations. But despite that, because it was statutory in nature, they were supposed to, you know, to implement. So, many newspapers did implement and it did not cover the electronic media, there was no digital media till then. So, this, you know, hide and seek, this, you know, this kind of a fight between the journalists, associations, the employers and the wage boards has been on for long. Till these four courts have been passed, which means the wage boards, which were set up after much consideration for a very, you know, niche profession, have also been abandoned. There are no wage boards as of now. So, there are two things, you know, one is that the journalists associations have been thinking that, you know, it is in collusion with the government, these very powerful media parents have, you know, subsumed these, made these acts there to be subsumed so that they have no power at all to fight, you know, anywhere. But let's see how these courts are going to, are going to impact the media industry. Now, when you look at, you know, these courts, folk are huge and sometimes you find the language is of something which only legal minds can understand. So, every time these associations and the trade unions were meeting, so they had to include lot of legal minds to get into the undercurrents, get into between the lines, you know, and chew it up what really it means. And here I'm reminded of what the current, you know, Chief Justice of India, Ramana, was talking about the rule of law, a day before yesterday. And I was very impressed what he had to say about the four principles of the rule of law on thirty June. One, he said law must be clear and accessible. Because laws are for the people, people are not for the laws. So, it has to be very clear, we must understand and accessible, we must access to that. Now, thanks to Digital India, you find almost all laws are on the digital space. The second, you know, consideration was the laws must be worded in simple and unambiguous language. The moment anyone who reads the law must understand what it is all about. Three said the members of society should have the right to participate in making refinement of the laws. One good thing which has happened the last, I would say, ten years or so, that the parliament, every time there's a bill which is, you know, to be put up in the parliament, it is kept in the public domain, it's in the digital space. And the people of the general public, the people who are stakeholders, they are encouraged to send their, you know, send their observations, their comments, their, their advice on that. And these four laws also, courts were also put in the public domain, they generally keep it for a month or so. And then when the parliamentary committee, standing committee sits, you know, looking at the nitty-gritty, they also involve a lot of stakeholders. And in these cases also, there was a huge consultation. And the fourth thing which Mr. Justice Ramana said was, the people must participate in the laws that govern them. So, how do they participate in that in that context? They select or they, not select, they elect the parliament every five years. They elect their MLAs and the chief ministers every five years. So, that they have the right to, you know, elect the people they want. And he said that in the last, you know, over seventy years, there has been change eight times in the parliament, there are different parties came, which means that the people were able to, despite what criticism we might say that there's a huge illiteracy, there's a huge, you know, caste politics, but they have, you know, used their franchise in a manner to change the government, which means the laws have to be such that people understand, they participate and they also use for their own benefit. Now, let us look at, I told you that I looked at the NSO and the census. And we find that journalists have been put together, clubbed with authors and other writers. There is no independent occupation of journalists. Imagine that there, I told you more than one lakh newspapers publications, four hundred, you know, news channels, so many digital channels and media reaches the length and breadth of the country. If not more, almost seventy to eighty percent people have access to media. But still the profession of journalism is clubbed with authors and other writers, which is very unfair. And very interestingly, the census reflects a total number of only four thousand two one six as urban journalists and three one four two as rural journalists. Now, this is huge understatement. Even if we say that they have only looked at, say seventeen thousand newspapers which are mainstream. So, you cannot have just eight thousand journalists in seventeen thousand newspapers. So, what could be the issue? I'm sure some of you would have guessed, these people must be, it was done in two thousand eleven, must be the kind of quote-unquote, kind of permanent job. The people working in media in, on contractual basis, they are not on anybody's wish list, they must not have been included. And very interestingly, if you look at the way media works, I'm sure some of your teachers would have told you, most of the media, people who write for the media are not, may not necessarily be permanent, but they are on contract and they are someone who are called stringers. These stringers are not attached to any media per se. They work on column centimeter basis or per ten-second basis for the TV. And these people are the unsung heroes who work in most difficult circumstances in the, at the grassroots level, the most difficult, you know, even risking their lives. They bring stories of what you call, they generally term breaking news. So, these breaking news generally come from stringers who are not really cared for either by the media industry per se or even by the government. Because stringer as a term, as a vocabulary, does not appear in the occupation courts of the Census of India. Though stringer is a very well-known kind of a terminology all over the world. There was a time when stringers used to be, you know, they were also called hobby journalists. These, you know, the media guys will tell them because so that they don't come under the law, under the, you know. So, they would say that, please give us a writing that we are hobby journalists. And then they were not on their, you know, pay list. They would be paid probably cash sometimes, sometimes they would not even be paid cash. And they would even have to pay security in case they were given the mic, like, you know, the television channels have the mic. The name is written, Nastha, Can Times and what all other news channels you have. So, they had to pay as much as twenty-five thousand as a security. And tomorrow, in case they leave the job, they generally did not even get their security back. So, one thing you would understand, I'm not, I don't want to discourage you. Despite that, it will not be a very paying profession. Journalism is called the sunshine profession. Every youngsters, it's every youngster's dream to be a journalist. But then you must go with the eyes and ears open. It's, it's very paid for a very small, miniscule people who might even get five crores in a year. But for a majority of the people, it's not really a very paying profession. And a lot of risks on their lives also because when you write against the, the people who matter, there are mafia, they have been from the, from the, not only in politics but also in corporate sector. And you find that journalists risk their lives and many people die in the line of the duty. We saw during the covering COVID-19, even now, there are so many journalists who are, you know, risking their lives. They are dying during covering because, you know, when they cover day and night, whether royals, whether there are, you know, wars, they go there. And unfortunately, there's not much social security which they can bank upon. And one thing it has already, always, you know, really distressed me that journalists who look so empowered when you watch them, you think that you want to be journalists like so-and-so, I don't want to name them. So, many celebrity journalists who you follow, whose prime time bulletins you watch, they may be those celebrity journalists getting very well paid and paid and also looked after. But a majority of journalists who work from grassroots level and elsewhere, you know, they are the ones who I feel are sandwiched between two. One is that their own employers who do not really look after their interests as they should be doing and the powerful people against whom they write. And I can tell you, it's an empirical research that, you know, when, if you look at the sociology of the media, ninety-nine percent of media is owned by vested interests. It's a huge business houses who, which own media. So, for example, if there are twenty factories or twenty establishments, nineteen maybe something else and twentieth factory for them is a media factory which manufactures news. And news is not always objective, you'll realize only when you join there. You may have a lot of stars in your eyes that you want to change the world, every journalist wants to change the world. But when you see that what you bring from the field may not necessarily be published because of so many interests, so many pushes and pulls which happen. So, these journalists, the, I call them brave hearts. When they write, now there's a digital space and they are, you know, stalked, there's a lot of, you know, hate mongering those who, and so ideological lines which happens. So, when they write, you know, which doesn't affect, which affects the powerful. So, the media houses which are owned by the big business houses, it's a win-win situation for them. When they want to pull up the garment and twist their arms, so they are the journalists who write against them, they are very happy about it. The moment the government tells them, no, this has been very unfair and that you cannot get rid of that. So, who gets the X? Not the person who owns the media, it is unfortunate, the poor journalist whose job is Xed. And there's so many stories about that. I would like you, the students, to read a very interesting book by, you know, the Mehta, a very big-time journalist editor of many, you know, news magazines who died a couple of years ago. When you read his book, A Lucknow Boy, which you When you read his book, A Lucknow Boy, which you, every journalist must read. And Kuldeep Nayar's, uh, you know, book, he also died a couple of years ago. Which I read when I was a student, student of political science, Between the Lines. So when you read, you understand, and now there's another book by Mister Raman, uh, you know, who has written about, you know, uh. How to survive, uh, the, the, the mantra of surviving in the post-truth age. So you understand how media functions. What are the, uh, the, you know, the kind of influences? What are the kind of pressures under which media works? So you find ultimately, it's not the, the guy who owns media who suffers or. It is the journalist who puts his life in the line of his duty or her duty. So, uh, and these laws are very important for you to understand, so that when you start working, you must know the final lines. So what really are the areas of concerns, uh, as far as the working journalists are concerned? Now journalism is a highly skilled job. With the intellectual portion, clubbed with various kinds of skilled and unskilled jobs, this has been clubbed with them. There's no form commitment on minimum wages. Now, when they talk about minimum wages, when I did my research, I asked a lot of youngsters, uh, who are into the profession, they were very happy. And they said, ma'am, at least we'll have some minimum wages to take home. But when you look at, uh, you know, uh, clearly or very, you know, observantly, uh, the, the codes, the, the code on wages. It says this going to vary from state to states, which means there's no, uh, standard, uh, co-, you know, formula of arriving at minimum wages. It's about eighteen thousand rupees in the, uh, the central, uh, you know, a couple of, you know, months ago, when it was reading, it was eighteen thousand. It may not be so in the States. Now, trade unions are going to lose their power completely. Now, trade unions have been very powerful in the factories and all. When you look at the Industry Relations Code, you find that they hardly have any power. Now, you could, you know, there can be no flash strike now. And you have to give two months notice to strike work in case the, the people want to strike, but there's a right to strike work when you think. The things are not going good. But just in case, the case of the labor and management is in some tribunal, so you cannot strike work. Uh, even if there's something very imminent and you have to do. So these new courts, uh, disallow you to do, uh, to, to do any strike if the case is in the tribunal. And the, the another thing which the people are really worried about, as of now. If establishment had, uh, less than hundred people employees. So they could close it down without going to the government. Now that hundred has been raised to three hundred. So in case you have two ninety-nine people, you don't need any labor court or any labor ministry's approval, you can close down. Now, the, uh, the fear is that, and three hundred is a huge number. Most of our newspapers would fall in this category, which means tomorrow, if, uh, a newspaper or magazine is not profitable. For some other reasons, so they can close down without doing any explanation to anyone. And permanent jobs are going to be a complete impossibility. The higher end fire will be very rampant. And also you find that there's no provision for pension. The word pension is not mentioned at all in the wages. The other thing, one thing good which has happened is that they said that. There'll be gender equity, which is men and women will be treated equally, uh, you know, in terms of employment. But then, it has not elaborated on many things, you know. In terms of, uh, you know, promotions, in terms of training, in terms of special needs which women have, the maternity leave. And in terms of gender-based violence at workplaces and, and in case of, you know, uh, sexual harassment at workplace. The, the, the laws are silent on that. So as I said that, you know, uh, more than fifty crore people, uh, the journalists would become part of that. And, uh, which is going to be really bad because all these years, uh, the, uh, the media industry, the journalists per se. Were treated differently than others. But now, the question arises, why do we need a nuanced approach within these omnibus laws? Now, laws cannot be changed, they are already being passed and now they are only, uh, the rules and guidelines are being made. And thanks or no thanks to Covid nineteen. The government, uh, which was supposed to officialize them from first of April two thousand twenty-one. Has not done so because most of the states are reeling under the impact of Covid nineteen. So they have not sent their, uh, you know, consent on rules and guidelines, but very soon, these would be officialized. Now, why do we need a nuanced approach? Now, news media is a very unique function. News media is called the fourth estate in a democracy. In fact, it's said that the extent of democracy can be gauged from the extent of freedom the news media enjoys in a society. And the way the news media has gone, I'm sure, there must be a lot of discourses in your classrooms. News media is not what it used to be, is highly polarized now. And if you see that most of the media, as I said earlier also, is in the hands of the big businessmen. Now, how many times, whether you have, somebody has done the media tracking to see. The owners who own the media, what do they write about themselves? What do they write, you know, uh, uh, what do they broadcast about themselves? And these are big media, big, you know, uh, industrial conglomerates. So what it means? When the media is owned by the big business houses. So one thing is that a majority of the media outlets will not be writing against them. And an ordinary person, a ordinary reader or watcher of media would not even know that this so-and-so is owned by so-and-so. Two, because these are big conglomerates, they have a huge power of, uh, you know, advertising support. So even those media which are not under their control, they can control them through advertising. So it's very important for the media faculty, uh, to also inform, educate. The students of journalism, not just on the normative of, uh, uh, journalism, that it's a watchdog function, it's a public interest. So on and so forth, the ethics of media, but also the structural, uh, you know, issues of the media. The controls, the sociology and everything so that they go fully prepared when they become, uh, journalists. So all said and done, news media, uh, it's a washed-off function, nobody has told them that you're washed off. This is something they have taken on themselves because media is supposed to be representing the voice of the people. Is kind of confused between, uh, the people and the governors, the, of their governors, the government. And media, uh, since it's supposed to be independent, uh, you know. Media generally said that, uh, what is, you, you see in the media is the first rough draft in history. So when something appears in the media, it legitimizes it, that this really occurred. So they're the first ones to give a stamp on what has occurred, this is a breaking news or a normal news. But it appears in the media, so it has a huge, huge function, responsibility and also power. And the power of the media is not inherent, it is acquired. Is acquired through the eyeballs, acquired through the, uh, you know, watching it, to accessing news. So the, the power of media truly comes from the people who, uh, are media consumers. Similarly, the power of the government is inherent, but again, it comes from the people. Because the people who vote, then the people who decimate them during elections. Which means that both the news media and the government, the governors, they are both power institutions. And, and, and they're both accountable to the people per se. But does media really reflect the people's concerns as it should be doing? Or does it set agenda, sets agenda based on what the corporate sector, the politics of the day tells them? This is something you must understand and, and it's not a rocket science. If you're smart, you're perceptive, uh, you're incisive, your mind is incisive. The moment you look at media, you know what is fake news, what is paid news and who is setting the agenda. And this should be a very important part of learning in a journalism school. So news gathering, news curating, production is a highly intellectual professional job that needs to be treated differently. Uh, but also like professions like medicine, law, finance, et cetera. Unfortunately, the, uh, the media courses is, they are not, you know, really accredited. You do not need, uh, accreditation to become a journalist. You need an accreditation to become a doctor, you need an accreditation to become a lawyer. So it's high time the, the, uh, the news media professionals, organizations, the media institutes. Now, there are more than three hundred universities and, uh, standalone institutions which are teaching, uh. Uh, you know, journalism, the other, uh, ex- you know, ancillary courses. There were more than fifty thousand people who come out from these three hundred institutes to become journalists and other mass communication professionals. So it's high time that all put together must, must get accreditation. For, so the, the moment you are accredited, you get, uh, the respect. Your employers also respect you, the government respects you and you respect yourself. So, uh, it's very important that, uh, the, the professional journalism has to be treated slightly differently. Than all those, you know, organized, unorganized labor force. So now, what these, uh, as I said, the labor laws are going to do, uh, you know, uh, in a nutshell, as I said. Unbridled power with the employers' higher end fire. Cutting down to size the role and relevance of trade unions. The courts fail lip service of gender equity, the courts are employer-centric. And you know, if something goes wrong, of course you can go to the judicial, uh, you know, process, but it's so long. An average, you know, uh, average case takes about twenty years. So what are you going to do in case, uh, uh, you know, it's going to take so long, you are, you are fired. You won't be waiting for twenty years or ten years to get, uh, justice from the court of law. And there's no guarantee, this is most important, must bear in mind, that the media barons. Who did not even respect what the highest court of the land told them on the sixth pay commission, Majita Pay Commission. To give the, uh, the kind of scales and the salary to the people, they did not. Do you think they are going to honor these labor courts? Only God knows or they themselves know. So, uh, with this, I think my, uh, you know, discourse comes to an end. Except that I'd like to tell you that, uh, and I don't take much time here, but I'll tell you that. We prepare, I had prepared a working paper, which is in the public domain. I will send you the, if you just write I S I D where I work, go to the website and go to the working papers. You can see the working paper on that, that tells you that before these, uh, you know, uh, these laws are to be operationalized. That working paper has given some policy considerations to the. Uh, chairperson of the Standing Committee of Parliament and has sent it to all stakeholders. That within those laws, how can you, you know, help the, uh, the journalist, the working journalist? So that they are not treated like anybody else, but they have a special place because those two laws will not be, uh. Taken back, which have already been subsumed, which includes that gender equity has to be, uh, you know, um, decide has to be, you know. Gender equity and gender equality has to be, uh, discussed more clearly. And then it also says that, uh, you know, uh, any establishment which has less than ten people. Does not come under the ambit of these laws. And if you look at the digital space, generally, uh, people, uh, they're not more than ten people. And when you look at these small newspapers, generally they depend on stringers and all, they may not be ten people. So you'll find that most of these small newspapers in digital space will not be covered by these labor laws at all. So we have requested that, that media should be treated differently. And an establishment should also be defined differently for, uh, the media people. The establishment is a brick and mortar, you have to have a factory. Now, media can work in a space which is virtual. People might be working from homes, as most of us are doing now. And the digital space, somebody might be working, you know, from ten different countries. So we have also said in that policy consideration that, uh, that media is established maybe, uh, you know, defined differently and not as. The, the normal definition of establishment. And we've also said that though they are saying that the electronic media and the digital media people will also be, uh, considered working journalists. But when they're defining working journalists, they have not been added in the definition of employees. So when you don't, uh, you know, include them as employees, so how can they get all these, uh, promised, uh. Social security and, uh, you know, the occupational safety, et cetera, measures. So we have included that also. We've also said in that, that, uh, you know, uh, we have now a Press Council of India. Which looks at the, uh, the issues of the, or other regulars, the print media, so Seethao. And this was, you know, established in the sixties, you know, so obviously there was hardly any, there was only dur-darshan. And there was no digital media, so we have also suggested that, nor should we call it media council. And must takes under this ambit both the electronic media and also digital media because. It's supposed to safeguard the interest of, uh, uh, interest of, uh, the journalists working, uh, in various media outlets. So I'll end by saying about John Eliot once said that. All meaning comes through interpretation, how do you interpret it? So I hope, uh, that with all that material which is available, the angst, the, uh, the angst of the people, the trade unions. The working journalists, there's a lot of space, lot of, lot of content available, uh, in the media. The government, you know, looks at it empathetically. So when these, uh, uh, these are officialized, uh, these laws are officialized. News media industry within those, uh, you know, four major courts is taken separately, independently and empathetically. Though the chairperson of the, uh, the, the parliamentary committee told us in the webinar. The government has said that if not a wage board as it used to happen, but there would be. Uh, a separate, uh, you know, kind of whatever it might be called, uh, you know, uh, employment and wages, working conditions, uh, committee or board. Which will be made for the media industry, so let's hope, we are only cross-finger that everything works well. With the, you know, uh, these four courts and media industry which is a niche, which is a very independent. Sort of, it's, I mean, there are a lot of issues which we need to discuss, but despite that. Uh, we know the world around us through media stimuli, so they are treated, uh, better, uh, you know, than they were, uh, before. Uh, and the media, uh, you know, barons, the media employers also look at because they do a lot of work for them. They not only, you know, produce content for them. They are responsible also for creating the power position, cloud position for the media barons. So I hope good sense prevails and they all work in unison, the government, the media employers and the media guys. For the basic, uh, you know, the requirement or the expectation, the normative from journalism. That it is supposed to work in public interest. The intention versus, versus public interest must align, they must be symmetrical. So with this, I'll rest my discourse and pass it on to Mudita.
I am sure that this was thoroughly an eye-opening session for all the spectators. Thank you, ma'am, for sharing a bag full of knowledge. Now, I would like to invite Miss Mudita Raj, Assistant Professor, T M E Media School, to moderate the question-answer session.
Um, thank you, Ishika, thank, thank you, Ishika, thank you so much, ma'am. Uh, definitely our students would have gained a lot from everything you said, it was definitely an eye-opening session. Uh, I have a few questions, our first question is from Miss Supriti Arora, Assistant Professor, T M E Media School. She wants to know, given the limited salaries of journalists, plus all the other hurdles you mentioned about. What do you think are the factors that motivate a person to take up this line of work?
Difficult for me to answer, but I'll try my best. You know, when the journalists are not paid well, a lot of things happen. Obviously, they have a family to run, they have their own life to run, so a lot of other things come. My research study includes that, but I didn't include because, uh, that was the other side of the story. So they do a lot of freelance work. When I did, uh, this online survey, so a lot of people participated in that. So one of my questions was, I didn't say that, do you do, and it's called moonlighting. Moonlighting is doing a, a parallel job, not telling your boss, not telling your company that you're doing that. Is, uh, done, you know, uh, very cleverly. So I said, do you know anybody in your circle who does moonlighting? Believe you me, seventy-six percent said that we know people, they might be doing themselves, but they wouldn't have answered. So seventy-six percent people said, yes, we know many people in our, you know, in our circle who do moonlighting. Obviously, people have to make both ends meet. And it's not just in India, this phenomenon is there all over the world, all over the world, that what they do. And how do they do moonlighting? And they are now because of, uh, the internet connection and a lot of digital media. So they might be working maybe in a different name or whatever, it could be a pen name. So they become journalists for some, you know, news outlets, somewhere in Africa, maybe in South Asia or in America. The other which is not a good thing, they might work for the public relations consultancies. So journalists write very nicely, they understand, they are domain experts. So they get paid from the P R consultancy, so they double up as journalists and, which is, uh, uh, there could be conflict of interest also. So, uh, to answer her question, what motivates them? Now, motivation is something which comes from within. I, when I spoke to stringers, I spoke about two dozen stringers and they are paid very badly, they are the ones who are receiving it. Some people call me extortionist, they are the ones who bring stories and they might, you know, have some those sting operations that they do. Some people call me extortionist, they are the ones who bring stories and they might, you know, have some those sting operations that they do. A lot of, you know, they might threaten, they do, and and I got to know, and it's in the public domain, if you see news, laundry, reports and all. So it could be even at the behest of small newspapers, that I have your this, you know, video, if you don't pay us so and so or give us ads. So we are going to release this video, so all these things which are not good happen because the people are not paid well. So they have to make their ends meet, but there are some who, like about Vinod Mehta, when people, when he died. He was six feet tall and used to come very frequently to IMC also, we used to invite him. So one of the obituaries, I still remember, I don't know if the exact word said that, you know, then somebody is dead. So how do you take them? You put him on earth and he comes horizontal. Now, this gentleman Vinod Mehta used to live in a bursati somewhere in Nizamuddin. And and you know, when he had to be brought and how sensitively that journalist wrote. He said he was a guy who was above board, very ethical, who not given for all those, you know, kind of motivations they may have. His body came vertical. So obviously, when it is coming from the, from bursati down on a staircase, it can't come horizontal, it will come vertical. What he meant to say was, he was tall in life, he was tall in death. So you have to take your call, what kind of journalist want to be, is money important? If you are very rich, your parents have a lot of money, become a journalist, so that you are not depending on journalism to make your, he talked about bread and butter, Amrish. There there's no butter for most of us who who would be journalists. It could be just a dry bread, so if dry bread, you don't mind, go along, become a journalist.
Our next question, ma'am, is from Ananya Verma. She wants to know, India is constantly declining in the press freedom index. Do you feel the labor codes will affect, have any effect on that?
I think we are one forty-two in the, in one eighty, out of one eighty, which is as poor as our neighbors. So we are going down and down every year, but that has to do with regulation and decency at the level of governance. How the labor laws are going to improve or I don't think there's any connect, there's no connect to that.
Okay. Ma'am, my next question is from Priya Mishra. She wants to know, if journalists are defined as authors, what happens to their social security? Are they safeguarded in any way then?
Yes, these labor laws have a special code on social security, which looks very good on the face of it. But on social security says that appropriate measures should be taken, it looks little futuristic. Especially on their, they don't call it pension, they say old age, you know, kind of social security. And schools, you know, for their children, the school education or the 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 houses, et cetera, for them. But there's nothing as such now, little, it is little futuristic, that will make from time to time, you know, measures which would look after social security. But one good thing is that if somebody is hired and then fired, so that employer has to give fifteen days salary in a fund. Which will go in the reskilling the journalist. How would it operate? Only God knows. As of now, we do not know, but it does say that the employer will have to shell out fifteen days salary for that fund. One good thing you must have.
Uh, ma'am, my next question.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Ma'am, my next question is from Pratyak. She wants to know, what is the future of freelancers and stringers in rural areas and smaller towns? With media continuing to treat them as a part of informal sector with no regularization of hiring, retainership or even mostly any documentation? And ma'am, where do the citizen journalists fit in this equation?
Oh, as the stringers are considered, they are the most, you know, they are the ones who are, who suffer the most. But in our, you know, policy consideration, you said that stringer should be defined as part of journalist. Two, there should be a mechanism of working out their, if not salary, wages. Based on not just, now they are given per column centimeter or per number of words. But the amount of time they take in collecting that story and the equipment and we are also saying that not only their person, but their equipment should also be insured. There should be insurance of their person and equipment, how much they are going to listen, we have at least said. And we said that work out a formula, that they get at least a minimum wage, all put together, how much they do, you know, in a month. So they should get and it will be a tripartite, the employer will have to sit, whether they are going to work on that, only God knows, but from our side, we have done it. And freelance journalists, of course, a freelance journalist is different from a stringer. A stringer is generally a young guy who is working from one or two, you know, news outlets. And freelancers generally are those who had a stint as journalists, they are very well known, they get paid also very well. They work for one or two, you know, newspapers and they get paid for that. But no freelancers are included in, and all of these are included into social security. On the face of it, at least in letter, in spirit, only when it's operationalized, we get to know. But even gig workers, platform workers, they are all. So from that perspective, stringers are. So I spoke to a lot of people, I said, why don't you at least have an association of stringers? So that you can write to labor minister that we are also a category. Now, stringers work in lot of, you know, confidence and confidentiality, they would not tell their friend, they have no friends, they have no association. If tomorrow he says I'm working from so and so, that guy might go and start working. So they work in a lot of fear and anxiety, so they do not have any association. Imagine, the cinema workers association, now what is like, if you look at how smartly they have done it. Now, they are there only when the film is there. And they come from various parts of country, but they are, most of them are in Mumbai. But you know, they were so strong that the government made a law, cinema workers protection of their, you know, interests. Now, that law has also been subsumed like working journalist act. But there's nothing like freelancers, you know, any act of a stringer. So high time, somebody should take a call and join them and there are thousands of them. I would say lots of stringers were working. And there was a time, as I said, that they were not educated in journalism. But the, all the stringers I spoke with, you know, all of them had a degree in journalism or masters in journalism, imagine. After doing journalism, they become stringers and they get paid only by column centimeter or every ten second. But when you compare with the stringers in the USA, I was looking at, you know, one or two news channels and Washington Post and, you know, New York Times. They get paid very decently, very decently. I mean, in terms of ten dollars per line or something like that, so they make a good decent living. In India, you know, the wages in any case are very poor, but these people, they are warriors with a pen, you know. But they should fight for their own rights. But the unfortunate part is because they can, their own media will not be writing for them because the employers are not very caring about their own people. That's where the problem lies.
Uh, ma'am, my next question is from Mr. Mohit Kishore Wajh, he's an assistant professor at DME Media School. He wants to know, you just mentioned in your discourse that you are working with the government to bring a media council rather than a press council, which covers all the media. In the light of this, please share your views on N B A and B C C. Do you feel they are doing a good job?
Uh, now B triple C is the Consumer Complaints Council. And now a judge, you know, Geeta Mittal is heading it. In fact, I was addressing a webinar and that is for non-news, B triple C is for non-news. So I told her when I was introducing, I said that now since you are the B triple C and you have been a huge, huge votary of women empowerment. So I hope you would look at all the retrograde, you know, sitcoms and and series which we see, nagins and all. And the people who should be the doc, they are the ones who get padmashri. I said, you are going to have a look at it, so they don't do a great job, let me tell you. And and we also, the lot, you know, because these organizations really don't have teeth. They do not have, and we have seen what is happening. We are seeing what happened, there's no money for guessing. So these associations need to spruce up their job and also ASCII, like for example, even ASCII, which looks at the advertising, the content, so what's. You know, but if you, as academics, I'm finding a lot of questions from the academics in this with me. So as academics, what is your responsibility? Not just go to the class, teach and then finish. How can you bring about a change is very important. So what we did when I was doing last two years' portrayal of women in media, I was looking at advertising. Believe you me, small little actions with honesty which we take have some impact. So when this result, when this research was out, so I insisted on the Minister of I N B to organize a stakeholder conference for me. Because the 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 research, you know, the insights and findings were mind-boggling, we should have made anybody sit up in the seat. And you have a very good networker when you are in a media, if you are in a media, Amrish is, I really salute Amrish, the way he organizes things and he can do that also. So what, I was able to organize a stakeholder meeting. So these people, additional secretary, got to know through my institute, was under I N B, so I knew a lot of people there. So they invited even N B A people, B triple C people and ASCII, about twenty people invited from these professional organizations. And when we presented our findings, they were making faces, nobody likes research, these people don't like research. Those, you know, when you are critiquing, they are, I wouldn't even say criticizing them, because it was based on theoretical concept. So we didn't feel bad, I don't know what motivation, why do you guys keep on doing research which has no meaning, who bothers there, all that thing was going on. But believe you me, we also made a policy paper and then submitted to the people that mattered. And the Ministry of Women and Child Development, Simhuti Rani, she asked us to send us some more policy papers through the additional secretary, which I sent. Two things happened, I'm not saying that I'm taking credit or this research taking credit, because so sunar ki ek lohar ki hoti. So a lot, this thing has been going on for long. ASCII, which was very critical, had joined a UN stereotyping, there's a body, UN stereotyping. And as a, as a, you know, a base member, member of that organization. ASCII has commissioned the research in all twenty-six states on gender. Can you imagine? And this has happened on the last six months. So they must have thought, here's a, you know, research which has come. And now the last strike from my side is, my book is about to come in two months' time, it's called The Beauty Paradigm, Gender Discourse in Advertising. So Sage is publishing, in October the book would be out, which again reflects. So when we do something honestly, diligently, it does bring about change. So although the, you know, B triple C or N B and all, as academics, you should devote some time along with the students in doing kind of research. Because nobody can question an empirical research. And when academics do, generally it is not questioned. So things can change only when we all join together to bring about it and we have to be changed, we have to change ourselves first for that. Be the change you want, you know, this to happen, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, I think I'll take the last question for the day then. Our last question is from Rudranch. He wants to know, please share your views on the new guidelines framed by the government to regulate the digital independent media.
It's a long, long, it's not my cup of tea now at the moment. But a lot, this is already in the public domain and you see there's a lot of questions, a lot of anxiety, a lot of. So the government does one thing, but as as people, as consumers, media consumers, as academics, we have to look at it. And it's not only just the government of India, you see the entire world. You always thought that internet was the most democratic forum, is it? The news aggregators have become the media unto themselves. So there's this huge, huge regimentation, so this is a much larger question, which we need a separate probably, a conference or a day's discourse on that. I definitely have views on that, yeah.
Thank you so much, ma'am, for answering all the questions. Over to you, Ishika.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, I would like to request Professor Dr. Susmita Bala, Head DME Media School, Delhi Metropolitan Education, to give the concluding remarks.
Thank you, Ishika. Thank you so much for sparing time for us, ma'am. You rightly said that we have lots of law, but point is this, how many of them are important and useful? It's a big question. You talked about labor law and particularly working journalists and different aspects of that. Your word of caution for budding journalists is valuable. Young students will certainly be dedicated by your lecture, so thank you, ma'am, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. Sushmita, it's always a pleasure to meet you and Amrish.
Thank you, ma'am.
All the young faculty members, I am so happy you involved the students also in the event.
Yes.
And wishing you all the best, it's a huge, large, long conference for ten days, wishing you the very best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would like to thank Professor Jayshri Chaitwaney for this exuberant discussion on such a crucial topic. Thank you so much, ma'am. I would also like to extend my gratitude to Professor Dr. Amrish Saxena, Dean, DME Media School, convener ICAN4. And Professor Dr. Susmita Bala, Head, DME Media School, Chief Associate Convener, for the ideation and planning of all the sessions. I would like to thank Ms. Manmeet Kaur, Dr. Manasvi Maheshwari, Ms. Shruti V S, Ms. Mudita Raj and Mr. Mohammed Kamil for the constant support and guidance. I would like to thank Mr. Rithik Ghosh, Mr. Samantha Sartidas, Mr. Sachin Nayar and Mr. Yogesh Sharma for providing the overall digital operations for ICAN4. I would now like to thank our entire team, all faculty members and students who have worked day and night facing all the challenges and obstacles of the pandemic to make this conference happen. I must thank all our participants who joined the session. Dear participants, we value your feedback. Do not forget to drop your valuable feedback on the link posted in the chat box. Follow our social media handles for more updates and information. Do not forget to visit the DME website and the ICAN4 micro website for any or all details. Stay tuned for the upcoming sessions. Next, we have our first technical session on communication and media resistance in socio-political context from eleven thirty A M to one thirty P M. Followed by a masterclass on documentary filmmaking by Mr. Vijay S. Doda from three P M to four thirty P M. And a panel discussion on people on Zoom, social implications of online learning from six P M onwards. See you all there. Till then, I take your leave. Thank you all for attending ICAN4. Have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.